All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Well, you are, you're always very important, but especially today. We have a very unique meeting today. We only have four council members and all of us have to be in the room at the same time or the meeting ceases to exist. So, we had to wait for you. Yeah. We're gonna start our meeting this afternoon with an invocation by Pastor Terso Gonzalez of the Life Center of Fresno. So if everybody would please stand and Pastor, if you'd come forward and then we will continue with a flag salute. Do that next.
For your time, council members and fellow citizens. I pastor church of Life Center Fresno on the northwest corner of Cedar and Shield. And if, it's okay if I open up with scripture today and follow up with prayer. Second Chronicles, chapter nine, verse two. The Lord was speaking to the city as they built a temple. And it says, "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then where they hear from heaven and will see my face when we pray." Lord, we thank you today, dear God, for allowing us to join together, dear Lord. We ask you to continue to give us strength and wisdom, Lord. Give us the wisdom that you gave Solomon, dear God, as he wrote, wrote the book of problems, dear God. Give us the strength that he gave David, dear God, as he fought against the enemy trying to take over their lands, dear God. God, give us the perseverance, dear Lord, that he gave Daniel, dear Lord, when everybody wanted to change because what others were doing, dear Lord. We ask you to continue, dear Lord, to lead us and guide us and direct us in all that we do, dear Lord. This word right here above me says, "In God we trust," and that is something we do, dear Lord. We ask you to allow your spirit and your presence, dear God, to dwell within our city limits, dear God, and even the joining cities that touch us, dear God, so that we could be an impact and we could touch and help them as we grow and we succeed in all that we do, Lord, dear God. From every corner of the city, every street, every alley, dear God, every parking lot, allow your presence and your spirit to lead and guide and let it be felt, dear Lord, at every hour of the day, dear Lord, continue to work, dear God, in the monks of our council members, our public people, dear God, our city officials, dear Lord, our chiefs, our captains, dear Lord, everybody that continues to help, even to the individuals that call the great city of Fresno their home. We thank you for all that you've done, all that you can continue to do. In the wonderful name of Jesus, we pray, if we could all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Let's salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Yeah, right now. Madam Clerk, if you could take the roll call.
I will, and I also want to mention that we have to have roll call votes for every motion that is made today.
Okay.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brettafeld is absent. Councilmember Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Olivier. Vice President Brandow.
Here.
And President Soria.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. And then, Madam Clerk, if you could tell us, are there any changes to today's agenda?
I have two changes to the agenda. The first is item one T, which is approving up to $12,000 to reimburse the county clerk's office for overtime expenses. That is being pulled from the agenda. And then the proclamation for Splash City West is being removed from the agenda as well. Those are only two changes I have.
All right, thank you. Do any council members have any changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve from Councilman Olivier and a second from Councilman Chavez. And I guess we have to take a roll call vote even on these simple ones. Okay, let's do that.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Capriolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier. Council Vice President Brandow.
Yes.
And Council President Soria.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And then on to today's consent calendar. Do we, do have any council members want to poll any items on today's consent calendar? And I would like to poll item one B for discussion.
I'll poll Vice President.
Yes.
Can I poll item one?
One A?
Yes, please.
One A and one B polled. Any other items need to be polled for discussion? All right. So now tackling the balance of the consent calendar, I'd like to go out to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to address any of the items on the balance of the consent calendar? Seeing, sir? Well, it's our consent calendar. You have to talk about one of the items on the consent calendar. And so there's a whole bunch of items on our agenda. I think you have that. But you'll have time to talk unscheduled communication. I believe you are scheduled as well. So that will come up in a few minutes. Yeah, perfect.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. You're not being recorded. We can't hear what you're saying.
Say that again?
I don't understand.
Okay.
Approve Agenda One, Consent Calendar, one A you just dismissed, correct?
One A and one B are gonna come back for discussion. Now it's all the other ones, and I think there's like 15 more items.
Okay.
So if there's an item in there you'd like to address, you can do that. If it's not one of your issues, then we're just gonna pass it and we're gonna move on. And I think you're on the agenda in a few minutes.
Okay, all right.
No problem. Councilman Capriolio made a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Councilman Olivier seconded, and let's take a vote.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Capriolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier.
Yes.
Vice President Brandow.
Yes.
And President Soria.
Yes.
All right. So the rest of the consent calendar has been approved. And now we are gonna go to ceremonial presentations. And we're gonna come back to the two items from the consent calendar right after the ceremonial presentations. I did not see anybody from SBCA in the room earlier. Did they make it in today? Okay, so we're gonna skip that presentation and we're gonna go to a proclamation of regional reclamation facility large plant safety award day, and that's Councilman Baines.
Okay. All right, well, listen, good afternoon, and I get the great distinction of presenting the proclamation to our Fresno Regional Reclamation Facility, who apparently just won an award. I had to come up to speed on this and, and I am, uh, this is, you got, we won the first place award for safety, apparently for 2017, for 2017, right? So I'm gonna turn it over and let you talk a little bit about how we, how we win an award like this.
Thank you, council member. My name is Brian Spinder. I'm the Assistant Public Utilities Director for wastewater. And this is my safety team, and I'm extremely proud of these folks and what they have done. We've taken a safety program that was essentially nothing two years ago, and as you can see, we've won a statewide award for the safety at the wastewater treatment plant. We beat out several other contestants, and if you can think this is all wastewater treatment plants, I think there are above 70 employees or more throughout the state of California. So this is quite a prestigious award. What I would like to do is kind of put this into context for these folks, and what I'm gonna do is relate to a story that goes back quite a ways. In 1973, the war between the haves and the have-nots is raging in northern Ireland. There's a young lady walking down the street and coming the opposite direction, or some militants that are fleeing the English army. They lose control of the vehicle and they strike another woman with her three children, killed the three children. And she was so incensed by this that she went home and called 10 of her best friends and said, "We've got to do something about this. We've got to end this violence." So she called 10 of her friends, said, "We're gonna have a candlelight vigil here tomorrow night." So expecting 10 friends, 10,000 people showed up that next night to say they'd haven't had enough of the violence. That person's name was Betty Williams. Betty Williams would eventually go on to form People for Peace and also receive the Nobel Peace Prize in 1976. What was really important about this story is that it is not about extraordinary people doing ordinary things. It's about ordinary people doing extraordinary things. I want the three of you to understand that I am very proud of the extraordinary things that you do to keep our staff safe and going home whole at the end of the day. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Well, I have nothing to add to that. That's fantastic. That was, Madam Clerk, can you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas the Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility receives and treats over 70 million gallons of wastewater per day from domestic, commercial, and industrial users, and whereas the operation of the Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility requires 24 hours per day, seven days per week coverage by a staff of 172 employees, and whereas the Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility has developed a dedicated team of two safety specialists who train all staff on a regular and recurring basis for general safety principles, as well as highly specialized safety requirements required of each maintenance and operations position. And whereas full compliance with Cal OSHA required training and regulations were achieved resulting in the number of OSHA reportable injuries being reduced by 22% from fiscal year 2016 to the fiscal year 2017. And whereas the California Water Environment Association awards annual recognition to the programs in the wastewater industry within the state of California, and whereas the Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility was awarded the first place plant safety award for 2017 within the central Samoan King section of the California Water Environmental Association for plants with over 75 employees. And whereas having received this award, the Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility was further recognized at the statewide California Water Environment Association Annual Conference for the plants with over 75 employees with the first place plant safety award for 2017. And now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Lee Brand, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2018 to be Fresno Regional Reclamation Facility Large Plant Safety Award Day in the city of Fresno.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Our next ceremonial is a proclamation of Cambodian Reconciliation Committee Day, and that's from Councilmember Chavez.
Good afternoon. Can we have Mr. New come up with the representatives? Please join us up here. I know you're a little nervous. Don't worry. So, um, so we wanted to thank the organization for the work that they've been doing. This year was, I think, the, is it the eighth year or ninth year you've been doing the scholarships for the students? Oh, 18 years. And, and very special event that we have over in District Five at the Moskella Community Center. We bring all of our Cambodian students from across the Fresno Unified, Clovis Unified, Central Unified, and really honor them. And so that's one of the projects that the committee has been working on for the past couple of years. But the main one we wanted to highlight today is the advocacy that they do and making sure that the Cambodian community is represented, you know, in education, at the city, at the county. And Mr. New has really been at the forefront, along with his team, of making sure that that's the case, not just in southeast Fresno, but across the, the city of Fresno as a whole. And so today we wanted to bring them down to City Hall and honor them. I know you're very quiet. You do your work behind the scenes, but I felt it was important for the community to know exactly what you've been doing. And we know that a couple of weeks ago, we honored Officer Danny Kim, who's been very involved with the community. And today we wanted to honor the organization as a whole. So, Mr. New, if you would like to say a few words?
Good afternoon. My name is Peter New. I am Executive Director of Cambodian Reconciliation Committee. I'm nervous, I'm sorry about that. Thank you very much, Chavez. I do believe I've worked with you since, uh, there, right? And, yeah, a long time ago, so, yeah, no, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So, City Clerk, did you read the proclamation, please?
It is with great distinction and pride that we extend to you our sincerest appreciation by honoring and congratulating the Cambodian Reconciliation Committee, Inc., CRC, for your generosity and commitment to our community. We appreciate the organization's values and services, which include providing scholarships to graduating high school students, social services, leadership, and networking advocacy on behalf of the Cambodian people in Fresno. Your commitment and dedication have been an inspiration, and we thank you for all that you have done over the years and wish you continued success in the future. It's the organization's civic engagement that makes Fresno an all-American city. On behalf of the city of Fresno, we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council do hereby proclaim Thursday, July 26, 2018, to be Cambodian Reconciliation Committee Day Incorporated in the city of Fresno.
Next presentation is a special presentation from Councilmember Olivier. Clint, you're up. Your turn.
Is it my turn?
Yep.
They knew it was your turn. Okay. Mine is police-related. We need Captain Bridges, Lieutenant Robert Beckwith, and Detective Curtis Bunch to come forward, please. Because today is Detective Curtis Bunch Day in the city of Fresno. Are you surprised? I bet you're surprised, right?
All right.
You guys can come up. Don't be afraid. Come on up and stand here with us. I just wanted to, come on up, stand here with us. Hey, congratulations. You're surprised? Okay. Well, it, this is, this is really no surprise to us. I mean, to, to, to be honored, you really have to go above and beyond the call of duty. I mean, we don't do a lot of these, but my office staff in the Seventh District, and I want to make sure I have this right. So Curtis is the only pop officer that covers the, my district, District Seven. Okay. District Seven is, is one of those places in the city where we have places within our district that are struggling with everything that we're trying to rectify from this dais here. We have neighborhoods that are, it's not just the double whammy of, of gangs and drugs. It's like the, the quintuple whammy of gangs and drugs and human trafficking and illegal dumping and, I mean, you name it, we have these neighborhoods. And that is where Curtis spends every single day. When he leaves his, his family, he's out in our district and he's with people who really, really need him. And I've had the opportunity to actually see him work and be out in the field with him as he, POP, it's Pop Officer Problem Oriented Policing. This is not when somebody calls 911 and, and they drive out and respond. This is before that happens. This is trying to identify problems before they, they really become dangerous. This is engaging with people who are concerned neighbors, engaging with people who may be going the wrong direction toward crime. And so that's how important we have pop officers in the city of Fresno, and that's how important they are because they're actually out in the neighborhoods, engaging with people, talking with people before we have to deal with responding to a crime. So Curtis has gone above and beyond so many times, countless times, and I have seen it happen. I've seen him working, and I'm just so appreciative of, of your efforts because we're actually seeing a difference in our community. So can one person make a difference? Yes, one person can make a difference. Curtis is doing that in the city of Fresno, and that's why we're honoring him today. Let's give him a round of applause. So I wanted to, I wanted to read a couple of things from his bio before we present him with his proclamation. Detective Curtis Bunch is the only pop officer in Central Policing District. He's been with Fresno Police Department for 16 years. He's a member of our SWAT team, goes above and beyond consistently to try and help constituents and businesses prevent crime however they can. He helps them brainstorm what they can do and how PD can help. Lieutenant Beckwith says that he believes Detective Bunch is largely responsible for the decreases in both violent and property crime in the Central Policing District. Can you believe that? I love giving out proclamations like this, and I love giving out this news. It's fantastic accomplishment for you. He's been a magnificent partner to our office. Our staff emails him at least weekly, if not close to daily. He always responds quickly and either has a solution or is immediately working on a solution. He's got a willingness to reach out and work with code enforcement and other departments in the county and various other agencies. That is key because he's able to best use all the available resources to fix a problem, not just the resources that Fresno PD has. And obviously, those are scarce and those are stretched. So when we can engage other organizations and entities, it's, it's absolutely fantastic. And so we have somebody here who knows exactly what to do and what they're doing, and so we appreciate that very much. So I'm wondering if Detective, or excuse me, Lieutenant Beckwith or Captain Bridges wants to say a few words about the, okay, thank you.
I'll be real brief. Councilmember Olivier's already described Curtis really well, but just as an example, first of all, this was very hard to keep a surprise. I, I, you know, and then I, to show you what kind of person Curtis is, I told him the meeting was at 1:30. He showed up at 1 o'clock, which, again, made life more difficult, but, um, but we're, we're very fortunate, as has already been said, to have him in the district. There's no doubt, you know, I look at the numbers every day, and the work he does definitely has an impact. So we're, we're very fortunate to have him. So this is, this is a very nice, and we're very thankful to Councilmember Olivier for stepping forward and doing this. It's very nice.
Thank you. Did you want us to say a few words?
I've had the privilege of supervising Curtis as a patrol officer and as a detective, and as you mentioned, he's SWAT officer, and we are very pleased to have Curtis. Wish we had 800 more exactly like him.
All right, thank you. So I am going to present this certificate and this plaque. Madam Clerk, can you please read the, the proclamation?
Whereas Detective Curtis Bunch has been recognized as the most skilled problem solver for the Central Policing District by his superior officers and peers, and whereas Detective Bunch is an enormous asset to the Central Policing District, constantly going above and beyond the scope of his jobs to help residents, businesses, and fellow officers. And whereas Detective Bunch routinely works with various departments and outside agencies to provide the most effective and efficient customer service to the residents of Fresno Central Policing District. And whereas Detective Bunch proactively addresses quality of life issues, helping eliminate crime before it happens, and is largely responsible for the 5% decrease in violent crime and 20% decrease in property crime in the Central Policing District. And whereas Detective Bunch not only serves as the only and most excellent problem-oriented policing officer in the Central Policing District, but is also an outstanding member of the SWAT team in the city of Fresno. And whereas Detective Bunch has made countless contributions to the citizens and safety of the city of Fresno, and now therefore be resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim the 26th day of July to be Detective Curtis Bunch Day in the city of Fresno.
Yay. And, and thank you so much for what you do, and look at, he has a lovely family. Thank you for sharing him with us. He's, he's doing a great job. Thank you very much. And while you're here, I have a list of some things we need you to do.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, thank you, Clint. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for June 28th council meeting. Do any council members have any changes to those minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for that meeting?
Remove.
Motion by Councilman Chavez, and I'll second that motion to approve those minutes. Let's take a roll call vote to approve those minutes.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Capriolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Brandow.
Yes.
And President Soria.
Yes.
All right. And now we have council comments and reports. Any council members have anything they'd like to share? Okay. Councilman Capriolio or Council President Soria, anything on council comments?
Okay, you.
I'm okay, thank you.
Okay. Then I'm gonna make a brief comment. This week, Councilman Chavez and I were able to celebrate with our Mong and Southeast Asian community as they received a state grant and a USDA grant to help their farming community navigate the many new state regulations, especially under Sigma. This is very valuable to our important Southeast Asian farmers, and there's a lot of them, and it's very good that they've got this money. It's gonna allow them to stay up to speed with all the regulations so that they can comply and still continue to be successful in our community, and we're very glad to be there. Then I'd also like to add that in Pinedale, we officially, on the same day, we officially unveiled a sign naming the community center, the Paula S. Guzman Community Center. This is something we voted on officially in January, but the sign took some time to build and it was installed, and the sign is made from the original wood milled by the Sugar Pine Lumber Company that essentially created Pinedale. So those were two great events we got to share this week. All right. And I believe that does it for council reports and comments. And so now we're gonna move on to the contested consent calendar. And the first item we're gonna look at is the one Council President pulled, which is item one A. And that item is an approval, a contract change with American Paving Company of Fresno for the Fulton Street reconstruction.
Good afternoon, council. This is Randall Morrison with the Public Works Department. Can you hear? Good afternoon, council. This is Randall Morrison with the Public Works Department. I'm available with any questions on, on this item?
Okay. And now, Randall, we're gonna go to Council President. Council President, you pulled this item, and Randall's here to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I pulled the item, just a couple of questions. So one was, just wanted to inquire about how the contract has exceeded the 10%? And just wanted to understand the process in approving change orders on that 10%.
Council President, could you repeat the question?
Sorry, so the question, I hear myself when, when I'm asking, so it makes it a little challenging. But the question is, just wanting to understand the process in terms of exceeding the 10% contingency, because what I noticed that the work has already been done, just wanted to put it for the record, is that the typical process that we do at the city, or trying to understand all the cost overruns for this project?
Um, so I'll try to, I'll try to piece, piece together.
Counsel, excuse me.
The main reasons for the contract overruns on this project is largely due to a lot of the unforeseen's that we came across regarding basements that were unknown and some of the underground facilities that were left behind from, you know, previous construction projects. underground facilities that were left behind from, you know, previous construction projects. We also had a lot of issues with the large sewer main that went in Merced Street. And so working with contractor to work around all the existing utilities in that tight corridor and able to mitigate those and keep the, the project moving forward, that's, that's really the large reasons why we, we got up above 10% of the total project contract. And the reason that a lot of these items are coming in, in a follow-up change order after is because of, in order to keep construction moving, we, you know, we execute change orders and authorize the contractor to, to move forward with extra work. And that keeps construction moving without, you know, increasing the possible costs due to delays, mobilizing from, from one part of the site to another, stopping work. So there's a lot more that could come along if we weren't able to authorize them for the extra work. And so by doing so, we keep the project moving forward, we limit the possible costs and then we come back through with a follow-up change order after everything's been tabulated and we identify the actual cost for that work.
And did we exceed the 10% contingency? And that's what this reflects?
That's correct. Right, we're not, we're not over the budget contingency. We are still within budget on the overall project. We have, when we started the project, we, we assigned a contingency amount for the project and we're still within that. But on the contract, we have to bring these items before council for approval, once they exceed 10% of the total contract price. And, and actually, you know, we're treating this post-change order number one, we're treating that as our revised contract price. So originally, the bids came in higher, we executed change order number one, brought them, the total contract down in price significantly by over $2 million. And, and from that point on, we've been looking at it from the start. And so we're bringing forward any change order after change order number one that exceeds 10%. And so that follows along with our, our resolution, the change order resolution that requires us the approval authority on these change orders.
Council president, do you have any other questions or did that help at all? Or were you able to hear those answers?
I did hear, I just wanted to understand, I guess, the process. So the work was already done and you guys are just approving, having the, the change order passed? That's what I'm trying to understand.
So there are several items on this specific change order that were approved, approved on previous change orders. And so they are specific lines on previous change orders, they've already been approved. Contractor had authorization to execute those items of work under actual costs. And so the contractor goes out and performs the work. We look at their hourly rates for all the staff that they had working on it, their actual material costs. We, we quantify that and look at everything after the fact. And sometimes those come in under what the estimated costs were on the previous change order, sometimes they come in over. And so this is really reconciling the difference between the actual costs and the estimates that were on the previous change orders where those items of work were approved.
Just one last follow-up. Is that typical in all projects?
I think you're going to have to repeat that, council president. Council president, you're going to have to repeat that. That, that came out very muddled.
Oh, sorry. I just asked if this is typical when we're facing with this type of project.
Yes, this is typical for this type of work. And most of our contracts, our, our change orders, we, we execute them with these actual cost items. This is typical.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council president, did you, it was your item. Do you have a motion or do you want to leave it to us?
I'll make a motion.
That's a motion to approve from council president Soria and a second from Councilman Chavez. I'm going to go out to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this item? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baines.
Yes.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Brandall.
Yes.
Council President Soria.
Yes.
And that motion is approved 6 to 0. And then our next item was an item that I pulled, item 1B. It's a rejected bid for the Friant Road Median Island cap restoration project.
Good afternoon. Scott Mosier, Public Works Department.
And Scott, I, my questions here are, can you tell us a little bit about this project and then why, I think we only got one bidder to do the work and why we're rejecting that bid and where we go from here?
All right, thank you. And council, this project is primarily funded with some old urban growth management, that's UGM, major street zone dollars, and this is what's called Zone A in northeast Fresno. The Friant Road Median Island today, between Nies Avenue up around the curve past 41, is not to standard. It was really never finished. It is an asphalt median cap and very unlike the Friant Median either to the east, which is fully, has concrete decorative island cap, it has landscaping, or Blackstone Avenue to the south. So these were some essentially dollars left in the fund. About $500,000 is left in that UGM fund. We had identified a project to complete that UGM service area, to build, build, complete the Median Island. We only received one bid, I believe, for two reasons. One, it is more difficult from a traffic control perspective, working near the freeway. And second, just the, the economy is heating up and less contractors are available. The recommended plan, given the bid, is we would likely want to, since this is a, a project, council's approved in last year's budget, put out to bid, it's in this year as well. What we'd like to do is go back, value engineer that, work within dollars we have available that will very likely look at, say for example, limiting the work to west of the freeway ramps at that area. It is a gateway into the city and an area where we'd recommend putting those dollars to use for, for purpose intended.
And the project seems pretty expensive. So what's going on there? Is it just, is it a Caltrans deal as well?
It is. That is a very busy freeway interchange with the Friant 41 corridor, so work hours are fairly limited. That's the number one challenge of the area. But again, the, with the one bid we received is significantly more than the funding the city would have available. So we would look again to ask council to reject the bid, to have staff revise plans and work, work within, really to live within our means and, and bid it out again.
But it's, it's not work that your Public Works Department can do?
It would be, as far as our careers, we have a fairly long backlog just with issues. For example, it's concrete work. We're fairly busy with the, the seven-week program, working in neighborhoods, very much in need of concrete repairs. And typically, the private sector provides far more than one bid. We'll typically get four, five, six, seven bids on a project. So we think with repackaging that, we can get back out and see a number of our, you know, private sector contractors, partners come in, do a great job.
Thanks. Thank you, Scott. I'll make a motion to approve staffer recommendation and reject this bid and reboot this program.
Second.
Second by Councilman Chavez. And I'll go out to the public. Any members of the public like to address this item? Sir, you want to, if you do, step up to the microphone?
Yeah, okay. I remember the situation, right there. Okay, now look at, okay. When all heck broke loose about a year ago, family torn apart, all kinds of stuff, I shout out to Oregon about four times, right? Now Friant Avenue is going down the 41. The travelers are going to be going down the 99, not the 41. The future is traveling. You travel, you guys all travel. Okay, so you guys are going down the Friant and you guys want to repair Friant Road when the future is 99 and you guys are doing major repair right there. And, and everybody loves, what's that movie called, RV? Everybody's in RV right now. So, I mean, like the focus should be on, I mean, don't get me wrong, but if you're going to grant money to Friant, grant it to downtown where the ghetto is, sidewalks and roads right here, because downtown's expanding also. Okay, Friant, Friant's beautiful. Friant Avenue, right? It's beautiful. Okay, but, but the city's growing and the future is going here and, and I ride my bike. And, and the sidewalks and roads need to get done down here also or before Friant or 99. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this item? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Brandall.
Yes.
Council President Soria. Council President Soria. Thank you. Passes 6 to 0.
All right. I'm going to go slightly out of order on our next item and I know some of you've come for the 2 o'clock item, but Council President Soria is very limited on how much time she's going to be on the phone and she asked us a favor if we could address a couple of items that she would love to vote on. It's not that big of a deal, so I'm going to look at item 3D, 3E, and 3F and we'll start with item 3D. And that's actions pertaining to the International Association of Firefighters.
Good afternoon, council. Jeff Cardell, Director of Personnel Services. Item 3D is presenting before you a tentative agreement that we've reached with the firefighters or fire management unit 10 for a term of agreement that would end June 30, 2020. That, that tentative agreement has been fully ratified by the membership. The MOU provides for salary increases and other changes that are identified in the staff report. Staff recommends approval of the MOU and the Sauer Resolution Amendment. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I don't see anybody punched up. Any questions from council? Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to go out to the public now. Any members of the public like to address item 3D? And so I will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we'll go with a motion from Councilman Capriolio and a second by Council President Soria. And we've gone out to the public, so let's take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Capriolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Olivier. Vice President Brandall.
Yes.
And President Soria.
Yes.
Passes 6 to 0.
All right. Now on to item 3E. Jeff, this is also you. It's actions pertaining to the Fresno airports, public safety officers, operating engineers.
Thank you. Yes, with this item, it's a tentative agreement with the airport public safety officers unit that's been ratified by the membership. The MOU provides for salary increases and other changes that are identified in the staff report. Staff recommends approval of the MOU and the Sauer Resolution Amendment. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. If we have any questions from council? Okay, I'd like to go out to the public. Any members of the public like to address item 3E? Sir, if you'd like to address 3E, step up to the microphone, please.
What's that?
Yes, and we need your name and address.
Okay. My name's Jaime Loza, homeless. This is pertaining to overtime, right? For pay and for the airport security.
It's not specifically overtime. It's a memorandum of understanding about their contract.
Okay, here goes the thing is, now I know airport, but I've been checking out downtown Fresno as everybody's kind of aware. And this is what I've been noticing, okay? Break times, okay? Some are 15 minutes to a half an hour, okay? Lunches and stuff like that. I notice people nowadays ain't clocking in and out. And I notice people are more on their phones and stuff like that. So before everybody grants money for overtime and everything, everybody needs to start taking a look at everybody's breaks and lunches and seeing if they're taking the correct by state law. Because I noticed that down here, that they're like taking hour breaks. Longer than allowable lunches. Oh, I want to get these guys. Remember, guys, I record everything. I record everything. Okay. Hey, longer than allowable. So I'm pretty sure if I were to go to the airport, which I just might, and according to law, according to law, I'm going to start recording everybody taking long breaks and stuff like that. All right? Okay.
Anybody else from the public like to address this item? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Capriolio and a second from Councilman Chavez. And we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Capriolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier. Council Vice President Brandall.
Yes.
Council President Soria.
Yes.
Passes 6 to 0.
And now, third, third one of those, item 3F. Adopt a successor memorandum of understanding between the city of Fresno and the city of Fresno Professional Employees Association.
Thank you, council. Jeff Cardell, Director of Personnel Services. Yes, this is a tentative agreement between the Public Professional Employees Association and the city that was ratified by the membership for a term that will expire June 21st, 2020. The MOU provides for salary increases and other changes in compensation that are detailed in the report. In addition, this item also establishes three new classifications, the deputy city clerk, senior deputy city clerk, and public works manager licensed engineer. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public that would like to address item 3F? If so, step up to the microphone.
Okay, check this out. Okay, I've been running across a lot of professional individuals with unacceptable attitudes. Okay, like, I walk in here, I was going to walk in here with my suit, tie, apostolic Pentecostal. I'm apostolic Pentecostal for the last 12 years. I cuss a little bit, okay? But I heard this voice say, "Don't wear your suits. They should accept you for who you are." So I walk in here and I know I'm getting chased around by freaking people that ain't even security and all kinds of stuff, rude attitudes, all kinds of stuff, except security. They got good attitudes. And then the greeting lady too. Okay, but I've been running across a lot of unacceptable attitudes, permit, department and everything. I need to visit these guys.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment? Seeing none, I'll, I'll take a motion.
Remove.
Motion by Councilman Baines and a second by Councilman Chavez. And we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Capriolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier. Vice President Brandall.
Yes.
And President Soria. Motion passes 6 to 0.
All right, thank you. And so council president, those are all the items that you wanted to make sure that you were on the phone for. Just do me a favor and if you have to leave, let us know. That way we'll know how many council members we have to vote on items, please.
Okay, perfect.
All right. And now we're going to get back on to our regular schedule. We're going to go with the 2 o'clock item. Actions pertaining to the citywide replacement of high-pressure sodium streetlight fixtures with more energy-efficient light emitting diode fixtures.
I'm Scott Mosier, Public Works Director. The council previously received a staff presentation, so what we wanted to do was to briefly ask Assistant Director Robert Anderson to just do a very quick summary of the actions recommended by staff for council adoption. And then we have materials available if we need to pull up anything from the previous PowerPoint presentation. And we also have PG&E in the, in the chamber for any questions as well. So we wanted to briefly summarize the recommended actions.
Good afternoon, council president and council members, city manager. Robert Anderson from the public...
Robert Anderson from the Public Works Department. Today, I'm bringing before you a project that will not only save the city millions of dollars in energy savings, but will also replace the streetlights that are past their useful life expectancy. I'm here to request that council adopt a resolution to approve a finance agreement and energy services contract with Pacific Gas and Electric Company for the implementation of certain energy-related services. Adopt a finding categorical exemption pursuant to Class One, Section fifteen, three oh one C of the California Environmental Quality Act. Approval of six agreements with PG&E in the total amount of ten million, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, sixty-two dollars for a zero percent interest rate general on-bill financing. And approval of a master services agreement and associated work order with PG&E for turnkey services to replace the high-pressure sodium streetlights that we currently have with LED fixtures throughout the city of Fresno. On May thirtieth of this year, the city clerk and the Business Journal published the public notice that allows for the city to sole source with PG&E the turnkey installation process. This follows the California State Government Code, Section four two seventeen point one The turnkey program will allow for PG&E to perform the installation project with Cree fixtures that were purchased through a requirements contract performed by PG&E. The installation costs will include PG&E inspection and project management services. Our city of Fresno personnel will also be monitoring the installation, especially the traffic control. PG&E has also agreed to use local manpower from the local hall and also use local traffic control companies. On June twenty first, staff brought these agreements before council, and at that time it was continued until today. City staff met with Tanco Lighting and reviewed their proposal that was given to council on that day. City staff still recommends the PG&E offer as the most beneficial for the city. If approved by council, these documents would allow the city to begin the replacement project with PG&E as early as September of this year. And with a completion date approximately twelve to sixteen months later.
Interrupt you just for a second, 'cause I thought of a question before you move on. So you heard from the Tanco proposal, and you still decided to recommend PG&E. Could you go into what you found in the proposal or why you would continue to recommend PG&E?
Well, there was a number of things that I would like to talk about. Let's see if I can find my page. One of the items was the, the savings numbers I felt were pretty subjective. One of the items that they included in their proposal was for maintenance savings in the future. And in my mind, that the maintenance savings should be a wash regardless of which company does the installation, because they will all be new fixtures at that point. The GE fixture that Tanco brought forth was, I believe, an Evolve fixture from GE. And that fixture had a five-year warranty and with twenty-two thousand hours of lighting. The city standard is a ten-year warranty with fifty thousand hours of lighting. Those were two of the things that I found when we went through their proposal. Also, the proposal, of course, with PG&E is zero interest. The proposal that came to us from Tanco was through GE if we use the GE fixtures or a GE, at least fifty percent of GE equipment. And that was at, I think it was at three point seven nine percent interest rate. So just those couple of things in my mind lend me to believe that the PG&E offer is still the most beneficial for us.
Okay, thank you. So you, you still had some other comments, or did that?
Those, those were, those were a lot of them.
Okay. Okay. All right. And if we have any questions?
Sure.
We'll call you right back up.
We're all available.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions from council for Robert before I go to public? Okay. Then we have a list. These, these were for this item, right? So we have a list of people who filled out cards to speak on behalf of this item. I'm just gonna take them in the order handed to me. So first is Brian Blackwell. Brian, if you'd like to speak. Brian, not here? Well, you're, you're the first card turned in, Brian. So, yeah. So we're gonna go through cards. I think there's six of them. And then we'll go to anybody else who still wants to comment. So Brian, you have, please introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, my name's Brian Blackwell. And I'm interested in the LED street lighting proposal. I, I live in your district out there in Menlo. And, and I know street lighting is a big thing, 'cause there's a lot of issues with the current street lighting that we have. And energy efficiency is of value to all of us. So, but, but my issue is that it appears to me that there, that the council is only looking at a PG&E proposal. And from what I understand, the PG&E proposal is higher than somebody else's. And it's my opinion that we should put this out to public bid so that other people can bid on this project, so we have some other opportunities here. It just seems that PG&E's business is to sell energy. And we're looking to them to come to us and say, "How can we save energy?", which is, they're in the business of selling energy. So it seems to be there's a conflict there. Something seems kind of not right to me as a citizen. As a, as a citizen, okay? These are taxpayer dollars. We're all paying taxes, and I want to be as efficient with our dollars as we can be.
Makes sense. Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
You can ask a question to me, and then I can ask it to our staff.
So why is it, is it, have we put this out to public bid?
We'll get the answer to that for you. I'll ask that question.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Brian? Still have a minute and twenty seconds.
No, I guess not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Kulikowski, Kulikowski, maybe? John? Yep, okay.
Very good. Thank you. That made me feel quite at home. Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for your time today. As stated, my name is John Kulikowski, and I work in Fresno as a certified lighting designer. I'm here today as a concerned citizen of Fresno County in hopes of convincing the city to reject the PG&E turnkey proposal. And I don't know Mr. Blackwell, but I agree with him and put this project out to public bid. I own a home in the city of Clovis, which recently had the Cree fixtures installed. Clovis doesn't own their fixtures like the city of Fresno does, which gives you a great amount of power and leverage in this particular purchase. Having said that, the fixture's right outside my home. I have firsthand experience with it. Lighting design is a very important factor in any lighting system. And I can tell you from observing this particular installation, there was absolutely no time or thought put into the safety or the comfort of the driver or any pedestrian that may be in my subdivision. As a matter of fact, last night I went out and took a light meter out and actually started doing light readings in some of the yards in my neighborhood and found the Cree fixture to be in violation of code in regards to light trespass and the amount that it's allowed in someone else's property line, including my own. Oddly, my wife just went out this week to buy shading blinds for our front window because of all the light that's protruding through. Secondly, the Cree fixture, and I have had a chance to kind of review the proposals, the Cree fixture is not designed for Fresno heat. You can see it in documentation. Everything, all the life longevity is based on a seventy-seven degree ambient temperature. Now, I get up at four o'clock in the morning religiously, and I can tell you, it was eighty-two degrees this morning in Clovis. It was eighty-five yesterday, and probably gonna be eighty again tomorrow and the day after that, which means this fixture's gonna be operating about forty percent of its life in a capacity where it's actually going to be losing LED life and destroying the boards. Another thing in regards to the remarks made about the warranty, I do know the GE does have a policy. They will match any warranty in writing. So ten years, five years, doesn't really matter. That's something that can be worked out with the manufacturer. So that's just a side point. Really didn't intend on touching on that. The proposed Cree fixture is also greatly found upon by the local lighting designers in Fresno. You don't have to take my word on this. Make some phone calls. Ask an engineer. Most of them would tell you to use any other manufacturer than Cree in this town. The thing that bothers me the most is when a manufacturer omits elevated temperature life expectancy on their documentation. They're doing it for one reason. They're doing that to deceive the end user and hide a deficiency in their fixture. So my second point is really just about the dollars and cents. After reviewing the Tanco and P&amp;G proposals, I don't know, anyone in their right mind can spend and justify spending two million dollars more of the taxpayers' money on a proposal that doesn't include the twenty-eight-hundred post-top fixtures that are in and around the Fresno area. And I, they are in the Tanco proposal. And I don't care if Tanco gets this job, but I want to see the dollars get spent well. And quite frankly, I work downtown, and if you look around at the decorative fixtures in this town, they're terrible. They're yellow. They need to be replaced. So how can we spend this much more and just ignore that part of the lighting project? Not to mention, the city's gonna give up thousands of dollars in energy savings over the next twenty years by handing this over to PG&E.
John, you're, you're out of time now, so just wrap it up, and I gotta call the next person.
Very good. I'm sorry. City of Fresno has an advantage over Clovis in the fact that you do own your fixtures. And I think you owe it to the taxpayers to do your due diligence, to put this out to bid, demand calculations, and make sure that people are doing things per code. And that's what I got to say.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next is Ken Platt. Ken, please introduce yourself. Give us your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name's Ken Platt. I'm at two twenty Bay Shore Drive in San Francisco. And I want to congratulate you by getting the zero percent loan for this program. PG has, is up the minimum or the maximum capacity from two hundred and fifty thousand up to two million, because they've recognized that this has significant energy-saving benefits. But what, one thing that's not clear, what is clear, too, sorry. Can't read that. Is that per section one of the agreement, the, the loan agreement from PG&E, it says, "Customer shall arrange for its contractor as identified at the end of the agreement to provide work as described in the application." Most cities choose their own, their own contractor. They don't use PG&E. They don't have to use this program. Per section three, the last section of that agreement states that PG&E shall have no liability or makes any warranty regarding the work. This is reflected too in their proposed MSA. There is no workmanship warranty in that MSA. They don't have to provide that. Per the supplemental information as part of the on-bill financing, customer's responsibility for the contractor and vendor, vendor, PG has notified customer, city is eligible for the program. PG&E does not endorse or recommend any particular contractor or vendor. So again, they do not endorse or recommend any. What they did here is highly unusual, recommending themselves. Last, I, we believe that the city should approve and receive the zero percent financing, but reject the MSA with PG&E. It's in the interest of the public to lower the amount of the loan from ten point two million down to about eight million. And we also think there would be a conflict of interest if you went with PG&E along with the, along with the loan agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jason Tanco.
Hi, I'm Jason Tanco from Tanco Lighting, two twenty Bay Shore Boulevard in San Francisco. I wanted to address a couple of the comments that were made prior, as well as address some from when we made the, the presentation during the public speaking period on June twenty first. So the, the comment that was made about the subjective savings, in the model that we had provided to Public Works, maintenance savings were put on both the PG&E model and on the city model. Or I should say, the model that we provided, which means if that is the same fixed cost and that's removed, the savings remain because it's across the energy savings. So it was the same number on both. In terms of the warranty, GE does have a ten-year warranty. It is just simply requesting it. So granted, none of this information was actually requested from us, and we had none of these questions prior. We had been in contact with Public Works and did make a presentation on June twen, excuse me, on June twenty eighth, but we had hardly any questions that really came out of that meeting or follow-up. In reference to the zero percent financing, just to be clear on what Ken's point is, is that the, the zero percent financing by law does not have to go with PG&E's offer. PG&E can offer zero percent financing. You guys can accept it, and then you guys can procure the work and put this out to bid on its own. I believe that there is some lack of clarification from PG&E's position, that they're making these agreements look married together. But the reality is that they are completely separated. And so I definitely would encourage the city to look at putting this out to bid. We've provided the Santa Clarita contract as an example. In terms of references, we gave the city of Modesto and Santa Clarita. Modesto had still not been contacted as of today, and yet it's a sister city right here in the valley who had to go through a very similar council action as this. And in terms of Santa Clarita, it really wasn't clear what contact had even been made with them. The Santa Clarita contract we're using is just an example. It is just to show where market pricing is now since this was recently procured. Almost all of our contracts go through public bid. PG&E's work in the past has almost been exclusively through sole source. This is how they operate through the market. But if PG&E's offer is so good, then why not have it market-tested? Why not have the opportunity for multiple vendors to bid on this? The city can keep its zero percent financing and then make the agreements according to whatever that new amount would be. Thank you.
And then the last card turned in, and others can speak on it still, is from Caroline
Hi, my name is Caroline McDonald. I'm from Tanco Lighting. My address is two twenty Bay Shore Boulevard in San Francisco. I wanted to bring forward my two cents and say that I think the proposed LED lighting project should be open to bid. After reviewing both Tanco and PG&E's analysis of the project, the city would be leaving roughly two point two million dollars on the table if the contract was signed to PG&E. And this is only considering the upfront construction cost of the project and not including the millions of dollars down the line saved. If this proposal were chosen to be opened up to bid, the city of Fresno would have a chance at giving that two point two million dollars right back to the community. There are several services that would benefit directly from those kinds of savings, one being the construction of a permanent and much-needed senior center. The two point two million would certainly assist in getting the senior center plan off the ground and shovel-ready in a much shorter time. Another benefit of these savings would be the hiring of more staff for the police and fire department and aiding their dispatch of nine-one-one call centers. I believe this would be in the city's best interest and hope that this proposal can be opened up to public bid, giving the residents a chance to benefit from the upfront savings. I thank you for this opportunity to speak and hope for a positive outcome. Thank you.
Right, that's the total number of cards that were turned in, but that doesn't mean you cannot speak on this item. If anybody would like to speak on this item, just approach the microphone, address, address, tell us where your, your name and address, and you'll have three minutes as well as those last. those last speakers did. Yes, sir, you wanna speak on this item? Approach the microphone, and you have to speak on this item. You're, you have an item coming up soon, yeah. Anybody from PG&E or anybody else that would like to address this? Okay, I don't see any. So, Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I just, I was kind of, my interest was piqued by Mr. Kulikowski's remarks about the serviceability of the product in the, in the heat. I thought he raised a couple of good points. Does somebody from city staff wish to talk about that? Has the, I mean, what's your background? You said you're a, a lighting designer?
Yes, for twenty years.
And, and that includes?
Specifically, my specialty is outdoor lighting.
Outdoor lighting, okay.
I've been working from hundred-day conference rooms, lighting the cross and faith-gone cathedral, and bounds on the road.
Oh, wow.
I have experience in both indoor and outdoor lighting.
Okay. It's, so Mr. Mosher, has this, has this been addressed in, in the enabling documents? Has this issue been raised, or is this the first time you've heard it as well?
Councilman Scott Mosher, Public Works. We, we actually, today we have about fifty Cree lights out in service, and our staff also in years past had done on-call maintenance as well. We had a, we have a, an agreement with the city of Clovis, and our traffic signal and streetlight electricians are very familiar with that product, we've tested them at length, those are on our qualified products list, and again, I, I would not be here before you with this type of investment and recommendation if we did not feel comfortable with that. Again, GE has valid, valid products, we have GE products on our qualified products list as well, that we would accept, but today, even city of Fresno, we've, have dozens of Cree lights out in service, and to date, we've not had an issue with one.
Maybe, I mean, correct, but maybe, I understood that some of the questions revolved around the lifespan of the product. What's the lifespan of the product compared to maybe other lights that are available to municipalities?
That, that is extremely important to us as Public Works and for the city, and we rely pretty heavily on the UL testing, United Laboratories, each product goes through rigorous testing, and with the Cree fixture, the one, the one we're looking at again, that PG&E had bid and that, that they have their requirements contract on, they have been tested at fifty-thousand hours, and again, the one, again, they're different GE products, no doubt, different, different fixtures, but the one which was included in the proposal only lasted twenty-two-thousand hours in the, the UL testing and the UL rating. So, we, if, if we were going a different path, if we were bidding it and looking at the spec, again, that, that particular product would not be one that would be accepted, we would wind up, takes, for example, it's a contract bid, and that product submitted, we would say, it's bid, the spec is fifty-thousand hours, UL rated, and we would reject that submittal and ask for another product that met the fifty. So we, we do not have any issues with the Cree product.
Okay, thank you. I have a number of other questions, but I think what I'd like to do is, is hear what my colleagues have to say on this item. Thank you.
Councilman Baines.
Yeah, thanks, Council President. Hey Scott, a couple, couple of questions as well, sorry to have you sit back down. One, I wanted to, to definitely get something clarified, I, I know I've spoken directly to PG&E and you as well about the work, the workforce issue, and in the staff report, it says that we're gonna be using IB double local twelve forty-five?
Yes.
But, but our local is one hundred, and you all had assured me that we were gonna be using local IBW workers for all additional work. So is the staff report incorrect, or?
Let me ask PG&E to respond to that. It, it is local one hundred.
And I did check with the app beforehand, so, but I did wanna make sure it was on the record correctly, 'cause the staff report does read differently.
Yes, and our apologies on that, it should be so noted, it is one, one hundred.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, just in, in light of some of the, the public comment we've heard today, I think it, it's fair to, to ask staff to explain to us, why exactly are we sole-sourcing this, and not doing a, doing a regular public process?
Absolutely, and Council, if I may walk, walk through those different points briefly. One, a, a big factor is the financing cost. With, with that, and we, we have met with PG&E, we have pursued financing, we've pursued that discussion with CPUC, actually with our partners up in Sacramento, the Strategic Growth Council, the I-Bank, and others, and we have verified, I, I understand the, the public comment today, speaking that the city could obtain zero percent from PG&E and not utilize them, our understanding, after all that research, is that it is indeed, it is tied to the turnkey, and that is verified also by city of Bakersfield, city of San Jose, city and county of San Francisco, Fresno Unified, other agencies who have utilized this approach. So that is one-point-nine million dollars right there. The other aspect with PG&E is the requirements contract, they bid for the lights, which provides another one-point-five million in savings. So with that, we, we really have a head start in that direction. If we were, and I wanna also highlight with PG&E, it is not, I, I, I don't think it represents the arrangement accurately to say it's a sole-source with a contractor, it, it is much more similar to joint projects we have with other agencies, and let me, let me walk through that a little bit. With PG&E, they would be, much like when we do a joint project, let's say with Fresno County, and the city has dollars in that, and the county is going to bid it out, award it, administer it, we're, we're utilizing their competitive process. With PG&E, they are really the project manager and the construction manager, they're, the lights have gone through a competitive procurement process, and then as well with the contractors, for this project, PG&E has three private contractors who are pre-qualified, they went through a pre-qualification process. Each segment would be bid, and with each one, PG&E would be providing the city the bid results, and we would be selecting the lowest responsive and responsible bidder of those for that, for that work. So with that, I mean, that is competitive, it, it's true, it's limited to those who are pre-qualified, but that, that then provides the savings. Also, I wanna highlight that the ten-point-two million dollars is not a bid from PG&E, that is a conservative estimate of the work which the city has partnered in obtaining, the cost could be less for that work. So that is only a conservative number, our, our interest is in making sure the, the return on investment is there, and that those dollars work, so that, that we would anticipate to be left, to be less. Also, we, we have actually, we've been through this before, in, in years past, one of my staff convinced me that we could do it better, faster, cheaper, we, we actually had met with PG&E years ago, and they proposed the turnkey process, and I had made the decision to, let's, let's bid it out, and let's go that route, and in, in hindsight, our total cost with the contractor bid, with our construction management, cost of designing, purchasing to bid out the project, we wound up more expensive than the PG&E proposal that we had initial received for that work. So with that, when PG&E was able to bring zero percent financing to the table, it became very clear, this was for us the best alternative. Recognizing the savings, every bit we can save, if there's a cheaper way to do it that gets us the desired outcome, better quality, I, I would be recommending that before this council, because that in turn yields more concrete repair in the neighborhoods, more paving, whatnot.
So, so you're saying that you actually did an analysis of the Tanco proposal?
We did, unfortunately, it is not apples-to-apples in that proposal. For example, the Tanco proposal, in our ten-point-two million dollars for the turnkey with PG&E, that also includes our staff costs to inspect, help inspect and oversee, that includes our cost if we need to do tree trimming, to reach and access some of the lights that are overgrown by the tree canopy. There are a number of items in there like that, that if we were to go with another route, we, we would have a number of additional costs to add on.
What does that, what does the additional cost come to?
Well, again, Council, that's, currently, it's not apples-to-apples, and if, if we were to go that route, if Council chose not to hire, not to go with the PG&E agreement, I would be recommending in that event that we would, would put together plans and specifications for specific sections of the city, and that we would bid it out on a traditional low-bid contract to local, local contractors, but we do not believe that that would be cheaper, we believe that would be three-point-four million more expensive.
How did you arrive at three-point-four million more expensive?
Well, the actual cost of the, of the lights, the contractors, the soft costs, plus the financing, that, that yields the difference between the two. One-point-nine million of that savings is in the financing, and again, let me go back to apples-and-apples on this, also, the Tanco proposal claimed one-point-seven million in energy savings versus what we'd shown in the staff report is one-point-six. I wanna disclose to the council, PG&E's initial estimate of savings is one-point-nine, in fact, greater than Tanco's. We've conservatively lowered that by three-hundred-thousand dollars a year, recognizing a desire to increase wattage in different neighborhoods, wherein today, you could just do a pure-energy savings, but there'll be a desire to make the light brighter than just energy savings. So we've anticipated, what if, we're working in a number of neighborhoods, there's a desire to make it, make them brighter, brighter even than LED would do, but even higher wattage LEDs, we will not save as much money, and we've made sure that what we anticipate will occur. So again, they are not apples-to-apples proposals.
Yeah, I guess, Scott, a couple things, and, and I appreciate some, some of your explanations, I guess the only thing that I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around, I, it's no question that, that this is a good deal, zero percent financing, I, I just really am not clear yet why we wouldn't go out the competitive bid. I, 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 I don't know yet why, and I was really hoping that that would really jump out to me really strong, as to why we would not go out the competitive bid and actually get an apples-to-apples comparison of projects.
Number, number one reason at this point is the zero percent is time-sensitive, PG&E offered that due to?
Hold on, let me, sorry.
Yes, sir.
And, and I guess that we, we probably should've done that a long time ago, and, and I've just saved you from the whole time sensitivity thing, to not upset the dais, 'cause we don't like the time sensitivity stuff, we don't want to be brought things where we only have a couple of days or weeks to make a decision. So I, I guess what I'm, what I'm having a hard time understanding is just, you know, we have a, you know, the council has a proposal sitting in front of us that says it's two million dollars cheaper for installation, and you've taken some time to describe why they aren't apple-to-apple comparisons, which is, which is some, which is fair, but I don't necessarily understand it completely, and I don't know why we didn't do an apples-to-apples comparison. So I, I'm having some heartburn about not having a competitive process, and not because PG&E aren't great community partners, they are, you know, PG&E's a great community partner, we do have an obligation to, to the public though as well, we're caught in a, caught in a bind here, so I'm gonna listen to, to a few more of my, see what, what my colleagues have to say about this, but I would've felt a whole lot better to not be sitting here with a proposal claiming that, you know, it's several million dollars cheaper, and we really haven't, I really haven't heard that we did the apples-to-apples comparison to figure out if in fact it's true or not. I, I just don't know, is it, even, if we did an apples-to-apple comparison, is it, is it, is it true, is it not true? You know, it, you know, what happens if you do the, the heads-up comparison? Is it still cheaper? What's the better deal for the city? I'm definitely concerned about what Mr. Ko, Ko, I'm gonna miss his name, but Kowalski here, Kulikowski said, uh, said about just the, the Cree light and what have you, I definitely would've liked some more information on that, that, that's somewhat troubling, but with, with that being the case, I'll, I'll wait to listen to my colleagues.
All right, I, I think I'll ask, oh, by the way, I should mention, I was informed that Council President Soria is no longer on the phone, so that only leaves the four of us and Councilman Capriolio on the phone. So I don't know, Cap, if you have, if you wanna chime in, just jump in and we'll recognize you. So I've been here, I've been listening, and I think really, it's hard to get to that apples-to-apples comparison unless you're going out to a bid, like Scott mentioned, for a certain number of lights, certain project parameters, and then you, then you'll see apples-to-apples come in, but it's hard to do that, it's hard for another company to put together that competitive document when they don't have those parameters right in front of them to, to deal with, so I, I have some concerns about that. I wanted to, I think, I think you guys got most of your questions answered, one of them was just about going out to public bid. Scott, there were a couple of other questions about the lighting itself, and, yeah, go ahead.
Before you go, can I ask, uh, uh, City Attorney's Office one question, I'm, I had it on my list here, and if I got to ask it, and that's just before you go to, okay?
Go ahead.
So, uh, City Attorney, we, we, we heard that the, that the proposal, that the bid is almost in two parts, one where it's a, the financing can be applied to any project, and the procurement can be done differently, is that, is that in fact true?
I just wanna make sure I understand your question, so.
Yeah, so, so, I don't remember who mentioned it, one of, one of the, the people making public comment mentioned that really what we're looking at as a council today, we're, we're deciding on two separate actions, kinda combined into one, but they can be, they can be separated, as we understand it. The zero percent financing would be applicable to another procurement project if we wanted to, it, now, there seem, there seems to be some disagreement one way or the other on that, and I'm just curious, have you guys analyzed that?
No, our office hasn't looked at that, staff has indicated that the, the zero percent financing is tied to PG&E, and we haven't taken a look at whether, see if that's true or not.
Okay.
So if it would be able, if it would be available to other contractors, for example, Tanco or any, anyone else.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Got it? All right, I was gonna ask Scott, but I don't know who the right person to ask, but I, I wanna address a couple of the concerns that were raised by questions from the public. The, the code, just even lighting and our codes, has there been a, a look at these products to see if they fit within our codes, if they do what we're, need them to do?
Absolutely, we, we have a, what we'd call an open specification, so it's available to really any vendor who would meet that criteria, for example, a new, new development, new subdivisions, a developer can propose any, any light that meets all the, the lighting specifications. Both the, we have GE products on our pre-qualified list, we have Cree, we have other manufacturers, and we've, we've actually deployed a number of different ones out in the field on various small pilot projects, so I, I feel like we have a pretty good representation, we've started slowly to make sure that we're in good shape, and again, you know, we're, we're very comfortable with, with the recommendation.
And does that include, Scott, these products being able to withstand the heat in Fresno?
Yes.
I'm done with my questions, Councilman Olivier.
Council President, I think in light of the fact that we have two council members completely missing from the meeting, and then one council member who's on, on hold at a gas station, I think that this is a, an, an issue of public policy that probably warrants a full council to be here, so if the administration doesn't object, I think we should probably kick this over to August ninth, so that would be my motion, thank you.
And Wilma, you have?
I'm okay if we wait, we're, we're okay if we wait until August ninth, we're happy to bring it back.
Okay, Councilman Baines has a second to Councilman Olivier's motion, what, so what can we accomplish by continuing the item? Just to have the other two council members present to vote on it? Councilman Olivier is, or, how would we get, you have...
The question?
So how do we benefit by continuing the item? Just to have the other two council members present?
I think we benefit in that we have more time to meet with PG&E, and we have time to take meetings with Public Works again, obviously. I, my questions arose during this discussion, and I thank public comment for that, and also some of the things that you have said, council colleagues. So I don't think that there's anything wrong with, I think that we can only benefit by hearing again from staff and then having a full council here. I, I think that we, we, that's not unprecedented, we've seen that before on other major issues. I think this is a major issue. It, it obviously is going to, going to have ramifications in our city for many, many years to come, and I think it would be, it would be beneficial to have a full council here and, and do this again.
And I was wondering, you know, just thought off the top of my head after hearing you and Councilman Baines, do you think, Wilma, that there could be, instead of taking a bunch of individual meetings, would there be, could this be a workshop scenario like if, where we could all hear the, the information at the same time and then take a vote on...
Are you thinking workshop item followed by action item?
Yes.
We can do that.
And in that way, it could be a robust workshop where we would want to hear the goals from the administration for getting all these streetlights done, and, and then all the different options, because we're finding this stuff out on, on the, on the run, so to speak. So I, I wonder if we could take a short workshop and then hear all the information and then have a voting item after that.
I'm, I'm fine with that, Councilman Brandau.
Okay. You know, I, I came prepared to vote today, and, you know, quite honestly, PG&E's been good partners with the City of Fresno on lots of stuff, so I was very open to supporting that. There are some serious concerns raised by the speakers who spoke this morning, and then all, this afternoon, and then Tango's presentation, which they passed out to council. So I've got, I don't have a problem continuing the item, but I think it's got to be, we need to hear everything at the same time, and then...
And I think we're going to bring it back on August 16th instead of the 9th. That'll give us a little bit of time, a few vacations, because the 9th was an added meeting, so we're going to wait until the 16th if that's okay with council.
Okay. So, City Clerk, do we need to devote on the, to continue it, or...
Yes, there's a motion and a second, so we...
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Olivier and a second by Councilman Baines to continue it to August 16th. And so let's take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Capriolio.
Well...
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Olivier. And Councilmember Brandau.
Yes.
And Councilmember Soria's absent. So that's a four to two with two people absents, so it passes.
Three to two now, we're down to five council members.
Okay, I've, I counted, yeah, you're right, three to two.
All right.
Forty.
Well, that's the second time we've talked about that, so we'll do it one more time. All right, let's go to the 205 item. The first 205 item is continue adoption, continue, a hearing to adopt a resolution and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding City of Fresno Community Facilities District Number 11.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department, and I'm here to present a public hearing. This is for Community Facilities District Number 11. This is a residential subdivision, the corner of Hamilton and Temperance. It has 144 homes. It's being developed by KB Kaufman-Broad. The annual cost per lot is $530.53. Staff is here for any questions, and we are recommending your approval. We have received all of the ballots, and they are all supportive of this, forming the CFD.
Is that in a certain council district, or, yeah?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Chavez, a second by Councilman Olivier.
It's a public hearing?
Oh.
What's that?
It is a public hearing. So you just need to open it up to the public before you vote.
Okay. So do any members of the public wish to address this item? All right, seeing none, we do take a vote on this item then, and we've got a motion and a second.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Capriolio.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier. Vice President Brandau.
Yes.
That's five, two absent.
Perfect. All right, the 205, item number two, continue a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding City of Fresno Community Facilities District Number 9.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing for Community Facilities District. This is in Council District 3. It is on the corner of East and Central. This is an industrial development. The annual assessment is $4,739. We have received all the ballots, and staff is recommending your approval after a public hearing.
Thank you. I'll go out to the public. Any members of the public like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the dais. Councilman Baines, this is in your district. You have a motion to approve. Councilman Baines, second by Councilman Chavez, and we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Capriolio.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Olivier. Vice President Brandau.
Yes.
That's five to zero with two absent.
All right. Right before we go to the 2:10 PM item, I'd like to go back and see if, because we had a scheduled appearance by two private citizens, Mary Esther Coria, is she here today? I don't see her. Okay, second by Gonzalo Arambula. Gonzalo, come introduce yourself and give us your address, and you'll have three minutes, please.
My name is Gonzalo Arambula. I'm transient, thanks to my parole officer. My concern is about a few things, mainly the harassment we've been victim of it. There are many people that really do technically commit crimes, and they're not being picked up by the police, and they're continuing doing things, and they're really not legal and also appropriate. We asked for the police support, and sort of the support we get, we've been ignored. Also, they've been things, and we don't see appropriate by the police. They allow some people to take showers right in front of the police headquarters, which is completely out of the line. We need to start seeing the really people that we want to care for Fresno, California. I'm one of them, I'm trying to do a few, a few projects, but I don't, I don't get that much support. I know the bureaucracy work kind of slow, but that's not what happened back in Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties. What I'm requesting is some support to do, some help to the city, some cleanup, and also, there are a few things that you might do, beginning by taking the three light systems that are across the street by the two buildings, assemblies, buildings, and also the court. There are three systems of lights, they shouldn't be taken out, two of them, and leave one, and use some of the people that are with me on the streets, because we've been forced to become homeless or transits. I'm willing to do some coordination, I'm willing to do some work, even though I'm in a wheelchair. I've been ignored by my parole officer to replace my wheelchair. Two days ago, I have an accident on a laundromat near here, and I ended up in a hospital. So if you please, let us to help the city and help us to be, to do, to have a little more than we have, and be less, less weak with the real people than they're not doing a thing to this city. So in the future, if you please, ask the police to really see who is the ones that are doing the damage, and who, which is the ones, we're trying to do the better, the best thing we can. So that's, that's all for today.
Thanks, Gonzalo.
You're welcome.
All right, continuing with that thought, we're going to go to unscheduled communication right now. We've had some folks waiting. Jaime, Loza, or Lola, I don't know if Jaime's still here. Yeah, oh, there you are, you moved.
Cal Fire here? No. All right, let's talk. I can only say certain things in front of Cal Fire. Okay, they got a restraint against me, I got to be careful of the words that come out of my mouth. All right, let's start with James Cook, owner of Cook Egg. I reported a carbon monoxide poisoning to my four kids. Now, before I stated this, but I'm going to get a little bit more into detail, okay? My four kids, 14, 13, seven, and four, that were born, two were born in that house, two seven years in that house. When I reported the carbon monoxide poisoning to James Cook, owner of Cook Egg, him, Mike Delpuppo, president of the Board of Cal Fire, and Jeff Shepherd, attorney at law, showed up to my house threatening me, telling me that they want entry into the house. I go, no, you guys ain't going to come into my house. Who are you guys? Mike Delpuppo, president of the Board of Cal Fire, introduced himself as Sanger, Fire Chief, which is a felony in the state of California to represent yourself as a fire chief. Okay, I got him on video and everything. Now, here goes, the thing is, get ready for the question, are you Mike Delpuppo's friend? Simple yes or no?
Well, we don't have to really play that game, but no, I don't...
This ain't a game. This is a carbon monoxide poisoning cover-up involving Mike Delpuppo. I could talk about this stuff because there ain't no Cal Fire officer up in there. They got a restraint against me. If there was a Cal Fire officer sitting right there, I'd be arrested for the statements coming out of my mouth. Now, I can talk about this. Okay, so this is not a game. My four kids lived from a carbon monoxide poisoning I put on Show Bee Berry, the Sydberry thing that I heard done, you guys can look it up, it's under Cal Fire, carbon monoxide poisoning cover-up. It's evidence. I got gas companies locking that thing out four times. Now, here goes, the thing is, I've been coming to this thing, and I know all you guys can read, okay? But here goes, the thing is, is you guys are City of Fresno. I'm going to the, the board meetings of Fresno County, I'm going to be taking care of this, doing it the legal way, paperwork, filing complaints and everything, okay? I don't think you guys can technically get involved since it's county, but, or, you guys don't want to get involved, but we'll figure that out later. I'll figure that out later, okay? I'm on a huge investigation, that's why I'm recording everybody. I've already recorded Samuel J. Alessandro cheating on his wife at lunch. Now, the people that are married, everybody better stay in the character, because Mike Delpuppo and them started me on no character. I'm going to be recording everybody that is not in character, and I don't know who are these people's friends. I don't care. All I do know is until somebody does a full investigation on the carbon monoxide poisoning cover-up involving Mike Delpuppo, James Cook, and Jeff Shepherd, I'm going to be in Fresno. I love Fresno. I love Fresno, man, I grew up back in 20 years. You didn't know that?
All right, thank you, Jaime. Next on the list is, and I might not get this name right, Kiriam or Kirin Wei? Yeah, I might have, yeah.
I'm at 2346 East Hampton Way, Fresno. Clean is my council member. And I came back to address, I'd been talking to the, the parking enforcement, and I haven't heard about the code enforcement, but I remembered last time I was, I was there to talk, the president, Council President Silva?
Soria, she's not here today.
She, she mentioned that if I was compliant in regard to that, and I said no, but I was, it was my concern is, is compliance justifying disregarding my constitutional rights. Because I was, I wanted to state that the fines were bills of attainder, and I had gone to the hearing regarding the code enforcement issue, and there was nothing really mentioned about what I had said about that bill of attainder, and they went ahead and forward, went forward to, I guess, they sent me a letter saying that it was forwarded to the, to the, just the Superior Court. Everything I sent to the Superior Court in regards to what they sent to me by correspondence, they never really responded back. Then I never heard anything until it ended up on the, the city tax bill. And I'm concerned that they're using the city tax bill and, to place a lien against our property in regard to this issue, which is really a bill of attainder. And also with the parking issue, I've been going back to them about the parking, as I'd like to move forward and get the tag for our truck that they gave us parking tickets for in our driveway, and I, they showed me the pictures of it last week, and there's, where the, where the car was situated is in the driveway, so it's kind of blocking, they say it's blocking the sidewalk, if you look down the line of the sidewalk, but there's plenty of room, there's, there's neighbors with wheelchairs and things that get around, and I never heard any complaints from them, just, just the problem that I'm dealing with, with the parking tickets. And they haven't really addressed the issue that I've, I've stated, they've just sent me more bills. Anyway, all right, my time is up.
Thank you for reporting in.
Hi, thank you.
Now, we're going to go to the 205 PM item number three. This is a continued hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding City of Fresno Community Facilities District Number 11.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers Andrew Benelli again with Public Works. I am here for a public hearing, Community Facilities District Number 11. This is a residential subdivision with 258 homes, it's on the corner of Shields and Locan, and it is in, let's see, Council District Number 4. The annual assessment is $731.47. We have received all the ballots, the landowners are supportive of this CFD, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Any members of the public like to comment?
I want to comment. I can record, right?
Yeah, I don't know about that.
That direction, correct? Can I record you? Pete Brandon?
Yeah.
Brandon Do.
Brandau.
Brandau, yes, sir, I got a comment. You said games? I state carbon monoxide poisoning cover-up, and you say games? I said my four kids, and you say games? My four kids, I'm a stand there, buddy. When somebody comes in here, states carbon monoxide poisoning, cover-up, poison, cover-up, whatever, okay? Especially a father that has tenre strain or is trying to prove carbon monoxide poisoning cover-up, do not say games to me, okay? Because this is not a game to me. Does it look like I'm laughing? Does it look like I'm playing games? You answered before. Is that little smirk, some, a...
Read into it whatever you will, you're not on the subject that we're talking about. You have to stay on this item, okay? But I'm trying to be somewhat pleasant here, but you're way off what we're talking about.
No, I'm right on.
Well, you had your three minutes already, so, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, have a good day.
I think I am on. Are you Mike Delpuppo's friend?
All right. Sorry about that, but Council, Councilman Capriolio, this is in your district. If you're still on the phone, would you like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion, just move, excuse me.
And we have a second by Councilman Baines. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baines.
Yes.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Olivier. Council President, Vice President Brandau.
Yes.
So that's five to zero with two absent.
Thank you, Andrew. Now, the 2:10 PM item, a hearing to consider the proposed annual assessment for the City of Fresno Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 1, citywide.
Good afternoon, Council. Erin Geary, Public Works. Today's an annual hearing and levy assessment of the City of Fresno's Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District as required by the LMD Act of 1972. Today's hearing is to allow for public testimony regarding the assessments and for council to approve the engineer's report and levying of the annual assessment. levying of the annual assessments. Um, as required, this hearing has been noticed, and to date, we have not received any, um, any, uh, letters of protest. Uh, total assessments are seven hundred and three thousand. That is to take care of the typical landscape maintenance duties in the LMD, uh, program. Um, that concludes my presentation. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Aaron. Right, I don't have any of my colleagues punched up. We'll go out to the public. Any member of the public like to comment on this item? Yes, you can comment on this item.
Uh, council members, uh, some of the people that want, that we are the same situation as I am, there are no, excuse me, I have some speaking problems. They know this, this two kinda jobs. We might use those people as a volunteer work. I know if you, any, any business, medium or small business, do a sponsor or support, uh, volunteer work, I know they get taxes, uh, back on the taxes. So, if you can, you might do that. Uh, trying to get some volunteer people. I grew up doing it.
Interesting. Thank, thanks, Gonzalo.
All right.
Approach the microphone and...
Hey, okay. Anytime, Loza?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Were you talking?
No, she's just reminding me of the timing.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. I got a thing. I record people. Okay, so the other day, I, 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 I'm right here, right? He's right. He's right. Homeless people, I watch people clean up the, uh, uh, places around there and everything, and then I record it. I've been recording Fresno County city workers, uh, uh, landscapers, the ones that come up over here cleaning the, uh, you know, all kinds of stuff. And here goes, the thing is, is I'm catching these guys out of character. I seen this one guy picking up next to the garbage can, a whole pile of garbage, and he's using the freaking hand picker-upper. And I recorded him, okay? But yet, I didn't record it, but it would've been nice if I would've recorded the homeless people sweeping and cleaning up their areas. Okay? So, I mean, technically, the Fresno city worker's making what? In the word between seventeen to twenty-five dollars an hour? And he's got a pretty good idea. I mean, the homeless people clean up. Okay? And I, I don't know, I don't know. But, I mean, they're not doing their job. The, the, the landscapers ain't, I watched, you guys will see it later. My videos are gonna come out. And when they do, they're gonna have city workers, you guys really should look them over because I got a bunch of Fresno city workers out of control. Okay? And mark my words, they're gonna get fired when you guys, some of them are gonna get fired, some of them are gonna get written up. But I don't care, because they should be doing their jobs.
Thank you. Do you have a motion? Motion by Councilman Chavez, second by Councilman Baines. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Olivier?
Yes.
Brandal?
Yes.
Five to zero, two absent.
Now to the 2:25 item, hearing to consider street name change, application number SNC two zero eighteen dash zero one, regarding an approximate six hundred foot segment of East Hardy Avenue near the intersection of South Cedar and East North Avenues, Council District Three.
Uh, good afternoon, Council President, uh, Brandal, members of the city council. Uh, Israel Trejo with the Devlin Resource Management Department. Uh, so this application is request to rename a small portion of East Hardy Avenue, uh, to East Amendola Drive, uh, at the location near Cedar and, and, uh, North Avenues. Um, within your staff report, uh, attached as Exhibit C, there's background and details, uh, on the proposed request. Additionally, the applicant is here, and I'd ask that he go over some of those details. Uh, this application was recommended for approval by the planning commission, and staff, staff is not aware of any opposition to the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. All right. And we'll, we'll go out to the public. Any members of the public like to address this item? Uh, I believe it's in your district, Councilman Baines?
I see Andy's here. I don't want to, just wanted to see if you wanted to come and say a couple words about it. We, we chatted about it a little bit ago in my office, so I'm happy to make the motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Baines. And it is always a pleasure being this side speaking, Wilma.
First of all, count, Vice President, council members, staff, I wanna thank you for the
opportunity to be here. Uh, when we presented this item initially to city staff, we were presenting it under the name of the Community Food Bank. Um, as of the beginning of this month, we are now Central California Food Bank. And we made that name change to reflect the diversity and the expansion that we have seen, um, in the work that we do. Uh, the Central California Food Bank has been providing food to Fresno and the Central Valley of California for twenty-six years. Uh, last ten years have been out of a leased facility approximately fifty thousand square feet. Two thousand and seven, when we moved in, we were writing about five million meals a year. We are now at thirty-three million meals out of that same fifty thousand square feet. So you can imagine it is, uh, proposed some operational challenges. Uh, a couple of the main ones being that with the rapid growth we've had in fresh produce, uh, unfortunately, we're leasing cold storage in Reedley six months of the year. So it's a logistic issue, it's a cost issue, and more than that, when you're dealing with fair perishable produce, peaches, plums, nectarines, you don't wanna handle them too often. So, we've had that. Additionally, with the lack of space, we've had to turn away food donation, donated food, and we've also had to turn away volunteers. So, with that, we had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Amendola about a year and a half ago. He mentioned the vacancy of their facility with their, their new operations being constructed, and has worked literally tirelessly behind the scenes with the state on the Cal, on the high-speed rail alignment, which is running by, with an absentee owner. And through this process, has not only enabled us to purchase the building significantly below the appraised value, but I think, as we shared, uh, earlier this month, has donated a million dollars in cash towards the project, and has left a significant amount of furnishing and operational equipment. So, uh, literally without his tenacity and generosity, we would still be trying to make ends meet in a fifty thousand square foot facility, which we outgrew many years ago. So, we thank you for the consideration of our request, and we look forward to the opportunity to, if approved, uh, have everybody out there with us when we get to unveil Amendola Drive.
Right on.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, thanks, Andy. I just wanted the, the council and the public to, to get a little bit of background. Definitely appreciate that. We talked a lot about the work that you all are doing out at the now Central California Food Bank. I mean, it, it, really great work. Uh, it is, it's an important, it's important work, too. Sadly, the need is there. Uh, and, you know, I think all of us up on this dais wanna work very hard to change that need, but, uh, we appreciate you all standing in the gap in these very important times. So, that, council, that, council, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
And I'll second, I'll second your motion. And I believe we've already gone out to the public, so we'll take a roll call vote, real quick.
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Olivier?
Yes.
Brandal?
Yes.
Five to zero with two absent.
Congratulations, Andy. Yeah, keep up the good work. All right, now we move into, uh, general admin, and we begin with item three A, actions pertaining to the Blackstone Avenue overlay project from Shaw Avenue to Ashland Avenue.
Good afternoon, council. Scott Tyler, Public Works. The item before you is for the Blackstone Avenue overlay project from Shaw Avenue to Ashland Avenue. This overlay project will grind and overlay that portion of Blackstone Avenue in both directions, make minor concrete repairs to bring deficient curb ramps to ADA standards, and there will also be some, um, reconstruction of pavement that has failed in the structural portion. The city received three sealed bids on a public bid opening on May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Cal Valley Construction was determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of one million, seven hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. In closing, staff recommends that city council adopt a finding of categorical exemption and award a construction contract to Cal Valley Construction. Thank you, and I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any, any members of the public like to address this item?
For the repair between Blackstone and Ashland and Shaw, correct? Uh, yeah, um, I know that area, too. I know all Fresno. Anyway, uh, down, here it goes back to downtown, okay? Downtown's booming again, you know? Right here, Fresno, I know Blackstone between Ashland and Shaw, and what really needs is between Belmont and Tulare. Okay, right? Uh, you know, coming towards this way or starting from this way, going that way, okay? Eventually get out to Ashland and Shaw, but start from up over here, because I'm telling you guys right now, ten, fifteen years from now, man, this thing's, uh, downtown's expanding. That's your guys' plan, right? That's the whole plan is expanding. So you guys are weighing the hell out up over there on Ashland between, uh, uh, Shaw, and it's like, get ready for up over here.
All right. This, um, item is in Council District Four and Seven, so if Councilman Olivier or Councilman Capriolio would like to, uh, make a motion?
It'd be my honor to make them.
Well, we'll make the guy, uh, at the gas station. Yeah, okay. We've got a motion and a second. We'll take a vote.
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Councilmember Capriolio?
Of, of course, yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Olivier?
Yes.
Brandal?
Yes.
Five to zero with two absent.
Well, congratulations, Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you all. Uh, working with all of you and Councilmember Olivier.
Right? And if you have to leave us, I know, um, we have a few items left, but just let me know, please.
Right to that.
All right. On, on to general admin, item three B, actions pertaining to West North Avenue asphalt overlay. This is in Council District Three and part of Fresno County.
Good afternoon, council members. Scott Seaman with Public Works. This project is for the award of a construction contract for North Avenue from Fig to Elm Avenue. It'll grind and overlay the complete roadway section, uh, correct curb ramps as required, reinstall loops at Elm, uh, the traffic detection loops, and, uh, replace the striping that's out there today, as well as the, uh, high visibility crosswalk at Clara. Um, we received three sealed bids that were opened in a public bid hearing on July tenth, and the lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Avacyn Construction of Madera, and their bid amount was five hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. Um, staff recommends the council award this contract with Avacyn in the amount of five hundred and nineteen, eight eighty-two, and, um, I will be here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Any, any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none. Uh, Councilman Baines, I believe it's in your district. We have a motion to approve, and a second from Councilman Chavez. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Olivier?
Yes.
Brandal?
Yes.
It's five zero, two absent.
All right. Item three C, actions related to purchasing Ford F-150 trucks for code enforcement activities.
Good afternoon, council. Jim Shad, Department of Transportation. Uh, this item is simply to purchase twenty-seven pickups for code enforcement activities. Uh, all but two of them are replacement vehicles, and, uh, two, the two in the balance are for growth. Uh, first item is, uh, of the, or first item is to approve the purchase, uh, contract to Swanson-Farnie Ford, the lowest apparent bidder, uh, in the amount of six hundred and ten thousand, five hundred dollars. The second item is just to allow the use of the city's master equipment lease purchase agreement to finance the twenty-seven vehicles. And then the last item is, uh, to, uh, approve an AAR to, uh, finance the, uh, first lease payment in the FY twenty nineteen year.
Thank, thank you, Jim. All right. Uh, we'll go out and we'll call you up if we have any questions. Appreciate it. Any members of the public like to address these Ford pickups? All right, seeing none. I'll bring it back up to, uh, my colleagues. Anybody like to make a, a motion from Councilman Chavez?
I got a quick question.
Oh.
Jim. So, I know we're, we're purchasing these from Swanson down in Selma. Any of our local dealerships had any interest in, in bidding? Did we approach them?
Yes. Uh, in fact, in this case, uh, Future Ford bid, uh, but, uh, they were not, uh, deemed a, uh, responsive bidder. They did not complete their paperwork correctly. Um, so they would've, uh, also, uh, been a bidder if they had, uh, completed the documentation correctly.
Were they much lower than, or comparable, or?
They were very close. Um, five hundred and fifty-seven, six hundred and thirty-one for, uh, Future versus five hundred and sixty-four, nine seventy-five for Swanson-Farnie Ford. The six-ten represents with tax. So, they, they were within... How much?
Seven.
About seven grand?
Seven grand lower?
Yeah, Future was about seven thousand lower.
It'd be great. We could get some of our local dealerships in. And I'm okay with this, and I think in the future, let's try to do maybe a little more outreach and helping them.
And, and we have been working to, to, uh, reach out to Future. Future, we do quite a bit of business on the parts side, um, and the service side. Uh, and we have also reached out to Lithia as of recent.
Oh, so we've currently purchased from local ones right now, too?
Yes. Um, uh, primarily the, um, Ford vehicles, uh, we get bidders for the Ford vehicles.
I'm not trying to start a fight, but is there a reason why we pick Fords?
Well, um, no, the bid is not structured always to pick Fords, uh, but there, there are some advantages to keeping the fleet uniform. I'm a Chevy guy, so, uh, but, uh, we, we are, are primarily Ford at this point in time.
That, that makes, that makes sense. Oh, oh, I'm, I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Are, did you make a motion, or? A motion by Councilman Olivier, a second by Councilman Baines. As a Selma native, I'm very happy to see this. However, I did buy my last Ford at Future Ford, so they can't be mad at me either. But, Councilman Chavez, the F-150 is the number one selling vehicle in America. I know Councilman Baines thinks it's the Fiat five hundred E.
That is a question.
All right.
That's wrong, God.
All right. City clerk, if we could take a vote, please.
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Olivier?
Yes.
Brandal?
Yes.
It's five zero with two absent.
All right, and we previously tackled, um, three D, three E, and three F when council president was on the phone. So we're on the city council part of the agenda for a approved designation of council president Soria as voting delegate and two city, and two council members as voting alternatives for the League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting on Friday, September fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Um, so every year, uh, I don't, I don't know who's going, who's going this year. I know I'll be there.
I'll go.
As Marelda, Capriolio, Steve, are you gonna be there?
Not sure.
Oliver, you should go. We, we can all go. It's, it's, um, you know, you don't have to be on the voting committee or anything. Um, council president obviously wants to be on the, uh, the convention floor and vote. Um, and so, you know, while, while sometimes I have question, her votes are questionable, I think that I'd be happy to make the motion to let her vote just one more time. So, um, that's a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, and that, that should include, um, so she'll be the voting delegate, Councilman Capriolio, and it doesn't look like, um, other council members wanna jump in that second. So I'll continue in that second, um, alternate spot. And then, so that's what we'll be voting on, that whole thing. I'll be the ballast, exactly. All right, city clerk?
Okay, and, and let me make sure I have it. So it's, uh, council president Soria with the alternates being Capriolio and Brandal?
Yes.
Okay. And did we go out to the public?
No. Any members of the public like to talk about this League of Cities item? Seeing none?
Okay, I'll take the roll call. Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Olivier?
Yes.
Brandal?
Yes.
Five to zero with two absent.
Okay, and I believe, did I skip anything, city clerk?
No, you got it all.
Okay, tried to work through it. I was a little rusty there. Uh, and we have no closed session today.
Right.
So that is the end of our city council meeting. Thank, thanks, Councilman Capriolio for calling in again this year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you again for having me, and you did a great job. Thank you to my fellow council members.
All right. And so our next meeting will be August ninth, and we'll see you then. All right, and so our next meeting will be August ninth, and we'll see you then.
Where is the Selma, huh?
Selma Bears.
Huh?
Selma Bears.
Yeah.